Point out to you that the fire exit is located to your left. In the event of a fire, you will be notified by an announcement. If notified, please move in a calm and orderly fashion to either the front or the rear exits. Do not use the elevator. Our meetings are being recorded by our Secretary Michelle for the purpose of a record, not a transcript or a verbatim recording, but it's important to identify for the minutes who is speaking. So when you come to the podium, please state, clearly state your name and your address each time you come to the podium. We will follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. There are extra copies of the agenda available on the table near the door. Once the case has been called, the applicant or their representative will come to the podium, identify themselves, state their address, raise their right hand to be sworn, and then present their case. During their presentation, members of the board have an opportunity to ask questions or engage in discussion with the applicant or their representative. Once that is concluded, we will then go to the public input portion of the meeting. Anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding the application can come to the podium, identify themselves along with their dress, address, and direct any questions or comments to the board, not to the applicant or the applicant's residence. We take the people who wish to speak to the application in three categories. First, we'll open it to those who wish to speak in favor of the application. Then we'll open it to those who wish to speak in opposition to the application. And then we'll open it to those who wish to speak to the application but aren't sure whether or not they're in favor of it or opposed to it, or just wish to comment on it for some reason. Once we've completed all of the public input portion, oh, and by the way, you have one opportunity at the podium to say what you'd like to say. There's no repeat trips, so make sure you say everything you wish to say when you're there. Once we've completed all the public input portion, then the applicant or their representative will be invited back to the podium to address any comments that they wish to address that arose during the public input portion of the meeting. After that's concluded, the case will be concluded, and we'll close the public hearing and continue on to the next case. After all the cases have been heard, the board will take a recess, and we will then return to deliberate each case in the order of the applicants that are still present in the room and in the order they appear on the agenda. So if the first applicant has left, then we would take the second case first and then go back to the first case after we'd completed all the deliberations and decisions with respect to those matters for which the applicants were present. No further input is allowed during that point, but you're welcome to stay and listen to the deliberation and the decision. If you wish to leave, you're welcome to do so, and if you want to know what the decision was, you can, if you get home in time, you can watch it on Channel 12, or you can call the office of the Building, Planning, and Zoning Department tomorrow morning after nine, and they will be glad to let you know what the determination was. And I'd like to welcome everybody back to the new year. We are a board of six at the present time, and we're in need of a seventh member, so I assume that hopefully by February, we'll be back up to a full complement of seven members. And having said that, and having Mr. Thomas join us, welcome, I believe we're ready to start with the first case.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item on the agenda is case number ZB 1401-1. Upon the matter of request by Land Tech Surveying and Planning, acting as agent for Tasteful Connections for an area of variance to operate a restaurant space with less than required parking on premises 1 Whipple Lane in a C commercial district.
Hello. I'm Sandra Holloway. I live at 2 Wadham View Estates in Arundacoit 14622. We operate a catering business.
Raise your right hand. You swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay.
We're referring to a business that we operate at 1 Whipple Lane. It's called Tasteful Connections Catering. We've been in business about 30 years, the last 12 in Arundacoit. We employ about 30 people, and we do primarily off-premise catering throughout Monroe County and beyond. Our intention to expand involves leasing 2,600 square feet of space at the opposite end of the building that we're already leasing to afford us the ability to get our own New York State liquor license so that we can provide bars to our catering clientele. New York State requires that anyone in order to have a New York State liquor license must be able to seat 50-plus people on premise, and with that space, we would be able to meet their criteria and go ahead and get a liquor license so that we can service our catering clientele better. Technically, it would be a space where we would show seating for 50-plus people. We're really looking for it to be kind of a low-profile, understated space where frankly, if we never booked an event in there, I'd be okay with that. It's kind of a means to an end in terms of satisfying the criteria for the liquor authority. But I guess we're here tonight to talk about parking.
We're here because you asked for, you need a variance. Your request is for 41 spaces instead of the 50 that would have been required.
I believe there's 35 or 36 parking spaces at that, on that site. I was originally told that in order to operate a restaurant-type facility, we needed to have two-thirds parking spaces for the number of people we would be looking to accommodate. So originally, that was going to be, is it two-thirds or one-third? It was supposed to originally be about 20 parking spaces. Now, the businesses do accommodate or do utilize some of those parking spaces. Again, we don't intend to have people come to this facility very often, and we have full control over when they would come and make sure that there were enough parking spaces for the invited guests.
Does anybody have any questions?
It doesn't spell out in our, in our packets where these spaces are going to be around the building.
Do you have a copy of the site plan?
Yes, I mean, it just basically is just in front of the building. There's existing.
There's two rows of parking, one right up against the building, and then the other one that runs closer to Whipple Lane.
Yep.
And then there's a few spots down at the end, right by the Ivan Green School.
Right. So you are going to take over all the existing spots in the front?
Well, anybody that was coming to be a guest in that underutilized, low-profile space would probably want to park at the south end of the building, closest to that facility. But typically, in the evening, there's nothing that goes on in those buildings, in any of those spaces. During the daytime, there are some employees that do take up some parking spaces, but the parking lot is never full. There is also a, behind the building, there's a stone parking lot where, you know, if need be, employees could park. And I believe that the owner of the building does have plans to ultimately pave that for staff and employees and so on. And there is a back door into the entrance as well.
So the banquet is, the banquet area is going to actually be at the south end of the building?
Right. If you look at the north end of the building, that's where we operate now.
Right.
With all of our off-premise catering, commercial kitchen, and so on.
Right.
So, yeah, that little space down at the end, the end closest to East Ridge Road, that is the space that we're intending to lease.
It looks like the back of the parking lot at one point, you say it's all stone back there, I didn't get back there?
It is stone. There's a driveway from East Ridge Road that runs behind 1 Whipple Lane, and within the last year or so, the owner of the building purchased that. And it is, it's stone. I mean, it's not paved, but it could park in there, like employees could park there if need be.
Looks like there might be some lawn back there also?
It's kind of like stone and lawn.
Okay.
Kind of, kind of a combination.
Kind of like behind your end of the building, the north end?
It actually runs behind the whole building.
Right, okay.
You purchased the, they purchased the entire lot back there?
I believe so.
My question is, your primary business is not really done, the catering part in this building, right?
Right.
It's actually done off-site somewhere.
Everything we've done for the last 30 years has been off-premise catering, but because we could never accommodate 50 people on premise, we've never been able to have our own liquor license. So we've always had to subcontract out all the liquor business to a subcontractor. And it's been, you know, a compromise of some potential revenue that would help us continue to grow our business and offer more hours, more opportunity to our staff.
So the addition of nine, or the various for nine parking spaces changes the fact that you can serve liquor at a party somewhere else?
I guess ultimately it does.
Because that gets your license for you.
Right. And again, I don't know the last time New York State evaluated their liquor laws and their liquor criteria, but, you know, as an off-premise caterer, we would like to be able to serve liquor to our clientele, but we don't really want people to come to us, which is why we're elected to be an off-premise caterer. I mean, we are not really looking to overly promote this space. You know, it's a space that we'll use for, you know, some of our employee meetings, and if somebody in town is having a little luncheon and they want to have 30 people over, we can deal with that. But this is not something that we're looking to, it certainly isn't going to change the face of the neighborhood. And we're not going to have any rock and rollin' parties. I mean, it's going to be real, if people didn't know we were there doing this, they wouldn't know that we were there doing this. There'll probably be many days it isn't even utilized.
Does the other companies object to you requesting the use of all the, all the spaces?
Well, it's two other companies. The one small place has a couple of evening meetings a week. The other place is Sumner Lee Electricians, and they, like us, they do everything off-premise. You know, they don't have clients that come to them. They have a few employees that park cars and then take one of their company vehicles on-site to do their electrical work. But there's really not a lot of in and out in that area. And if we did book something during the daytime, I would, you know, wander next door and chat with Sumner Lee and say, hey, you know, we may have an extra few cars, you know, in the parking lot, can we just, you know, be aware of that? We have a good working relationship, so I can't imagine that it will, it would cause a problem. And they've grown a lot since we've been in the building, and we've grown a lot since we've been there. So, I mean, there is a lot more activity there with employees in and out than there used to be, but that is a good thing for Arundacoit.
The question would be, you know, how many vehicles do they have, and how many spaces are taken up? For instance, if you're, if you're having a party and you're going to need 40 spaces, and they've got three or four commercial trucks that aren't out that night, and they're going to be taking up your spaces or their spaces.
Well, I don't think that we would ever have an event that would require 40 cars. I mean, if we had an event that required parking for 50, I think that when we originally talked about the zoning requirements, it was, they figured two people come in a car or something like that, so you'd need, you know, 30 parking spaces. Donna and I spent a lot of time working through this, but it was significantly less than 50 parking spaces for 50 people.
How many, the proposed banquet area, how many people are allowed in that room, like for fire control? And, I mean, is that going to be limited as far as how many people can be in that space? Is that, can you get 100 people in there? Can you get, I mean?
If it was a stand-up party, you probably could, but we don't want 100 people. You know, I mean, we wouldn't book anything that didn't make sense, and we wouldn't book it on a timeframe that didn't make sense. So, I mean, we wouldn't be able to book events on Tuesday night when this other place has their, their meetings. You know, again, we don't want people to come there. You know, really, the reason we're doing this is just to satisfy the liquor authority and enable us to get a liquor license so that we can go off-premise and cater our own bars for our own clients.
Okay.
And it is an expense we're willing to incur in order to do that, and we will gussy it up a little bit and so on, so that if we do have a luncheon for, you know, the zoning board or someone, you know, it'll be a decent place to come to, but it's not something we're really looking to promote. You know, if a bride wants to have a shower there for 30 people on a Sunday afternoon, okay, we could probably accommodate that, but we're not really looking to go out and build that part of our business. Frankly, we're busy enough right now as we are, and taking on this liquor piece, you know, that's good. We don't want to really be catering on-site events.
Do either of, the two, two other businesses that are in your building, are they here tonight to speak?
Not really so.
Have you talked to them in reference to getting a, a letter from them that says, hey, we're okay with this, and they can utilize?
I talked to the one place that has meetings on Tuesdays and Sundays, and he's kind of excited that there'd be an occupant in that space. I mean, empty space doesn't look good for anyone. As far as Sumner Lee, they know that we're leasing the space, and they know why. I haven't really brought up the parking thing with them. It really didn't seem to be an issue.
Well, that's my concern. It, you know, it's not an issue until it could be an issue.
You know, again, we, most of our employees live in Arundacoit. If it means that everybody has to, you know, carpool to work that day so that we're not utilizing any parking spaces for employees, we can do things like that. I think there's plenty of ways that, that we can work through this, and I'm certainly happy to speak with the folks over at Sumner Lee and make sure they're aware of this and that they're willing to work with us.
You know, I'm all for the idea, the whole idea. I just don't want to, you know, choke out the other two businesses that have rights to those parking spots.
And we would never allow that to happen. Again, neither of these places, well, the one place on Tuesdays and Sundays, they do have, you know, maybe 30 cars that come. Sumner Lee, they don't have clients that come in. I mean, occasionally, they get a delivery, so a big 18-wheeler will pull in, and we all have to move our cars to accommodate that, but they don't have clients. They maybe have, you know, some employee vehicles that sit there during the day, and they take the company vehicles out. But I don't really foresee that it's going to cause an issue. And again, if I need a letter from them, letting everyone know that we spoke and, you know, we'll work together on this, I'm sure I'd be able to accomplish that.
Well, that, and I think that would be good, plus also something from the landlord saying you could utilize the back parking lot if necessary for, for employees.
I can get that in writing. I mean, we've talked about it, and he's, he's welcomed us to use that space. In fact, he does want to get it paved at some point. He's, you know, he's talked about expanding the building, and, but that's not now, that's at some point in the future.
Okay.
There's three commercial spaces by your north end of the building?
Right.
Is that being utilized by the, your truck?
Company vans typically.
Sumner Lee and you, or?
No, just ours.
Just yours?
And again, both are out and about most of the time. And actually, I think there's four or five.
It says three on here.
I know, it does.
Hard to see.
There's a dumpster down there that Sumner Lee uses, but there's at least four, maybe five parking spaces. I think five.
If, if we were to grant the variance with stipulations based on getting letters from the, the other two companies and also getting a letter from the landlord saying it's okay to use the spots, would you be okay with that?
Oh, that'd be fine.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application?
Happy New Year to everyone. My name is Ann Burns, and I live at 199 Bellhurst Drive, and I would just like to speak in favor of this application. Mrs. Holloway and Tasteful Connections are the kind of business that we really need to grow here in Arundacoit. They're locally owned, they support our community. Many times, they're at community events, serving fudge for free in our school districts and within many of the activities within town. So, and I, I believe that Mrs. Holloway does work very well, not only with the community, but with the businesses that she is associated with there on Whipple Lane. So I would support this application 100%.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor of the application? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the application? Does anyone wish to speak with respect to the application, and you're not sure of what position you take? All right. Unless you want to add anything, we'll close the case and move on to the next matter on our agenda.
Okay, and if you'd like me to provide those letters, I can do that in the next couple days.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1401-2. Upon the matter of request by Angie Flack Brown Realty Group, Inc., acting as agent for the Brotherhood of St. Joseph for a use variance to convert the existing building into a shared professional office building on premises 1280 North Quentin Road in an R1 residential district.
Thank you. Like she said, my name is Angie Flack Brown. I'm a real estate agent with Keller Williams Realty, Greater Rochester. My address is 100 Monroe Parkway, and that's Rochester, New York, 14618. I'm here this evening.
If you could raise your right hand.
Oh, sorry.
That's right. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
I, I am here tonight sort of as, in two capacities. Number one, I've been hired by the Brotherhood of St. Joseph, who owns the building at 1280 North Quentin Road, as their real estate agent. They hired me last December to put the, the property on the market. The current owners, the Brotherhood of St. Joseph, actually live downstate in New Paltz, New York, and couldn't be here for the meeting, so they've also asked me to be their agent in this application process. So my, my clients purchased the property five years ago. It's been vacant for two years. We listed it last December, and it's been on the market, it was on the market about nine, nine months before an offer was made on the property. It's currently zoned as a residential property, but in my belief, it was built more as a commercial-looking building and commercial-feeling building. It was built as part of a campus by the Catholic Diocese of Rochester. There was a church, there was a convent, there was a school, and this piece of property most recently was used by the diocese as a retirement home for nuns. So it's a brick building that looks very much like a dorm. There's a living room, there's a dining room, there's a kitchen, and there are 10 to 12 very small bedrooms. It worked well for, for the Brotherhood of St. Joseph for a while. For various reasons, the house was closed down, and so I've been trying to sell this property as a residential home, because that's what it's zoned as.
We're familiar with that.
Yes, I'm sure you are. The difficulty with selling it as a residential home is there are very few people looking for commercial-type buildings with 10 to 12 bedrooms and six bathrooms on a main road in any town. It's been difficult. I think I showed the property a minimum of 25 times. I had one person that was actually considering looking at it and transforming it into something, you know, interesting, contemporary, knocking down walls, all of those kinds of things, and it was going to cost him roughly $350,000 to do what he wanted to do, and it just became cost prohibitive for him, so he chose not to write an offer on the property. We currently have an offer on the property by an organization that is looking to use it as shared office space, which would not fall within the residential guidelines. And so we are applying for a use variance on the property so that we can move forward with this, sell the property, and, and, you know, start making the, the neighborhood what it needs to be with businesses instead of empty buildings.
Can you address the criteria for the use variance for us, please?
The criteria for the use variance, I believe?
One is that you have to show an economic hardship.
Okay, well, part of the packet here, I do have, I have a few different letters. One was written by one of the representatives of the Brotherhood of St. Joseph that has talked about the fact that we haven't been able to have a reasonable return on their investment. They paid $250,000 for the property, listed originally very, very aggressively at 269.9. Nothing happened at that point. Reduced the price to 249.9, still nothing at that point. And the, the price that we have agreed on with our offer is significantly below the So, so they're, they're?
That would be, that would be what?
220,000.
Okay.
So they're, they're losing a significant amount of money. They've put some money into it.
They're losing about 10%, just right up, more than 10% right off the top.
More than 10% right off the top, absolutely. Not to mention the money that they've put in over the, you know, over time, and the maintenance, the continued maintenance that they're needing to spend every, every month, keeping the heat on and the snow and, you know, in the summertime, the, the grass and all of those kinds of things. So that was the first question. What was the second question you, you said?
Well, the second criteria is that the hardship relating to the property is unique, and I think you've addressed that.
It's pretty unique. It's a pretty unique property.
Unless the Von Trapp family's coming in looking for 12 bedrooms, you're not going to.
Exactly, exactly. Right, right. I mean, it's, it's a perfect building for a lot of things, but not really for a family. It would make a great daycare, it would make a great office building, it would make a great doctor's office. Just doesn't have that homey kind of warm and fuzzy feeling. And as a residential real estate agent, it's been a very, it's been a hardship for me trying to sell it. You know, it's, I think the unique circumstances are just the fact, the way it was built. I mean, it was really built as, as a convent, and it's, and there haven't been a whole lot of nuns out looking for properties lately. The other, the other things that I have here in this letter that I think were required was, was it or not self-created hardship, and I don't believe it was. They didn't do anything different to the property from the time that they purchased it until now that would have changed, you know, the, the look or the use of the property. There's no change in character for the neighborhood. If this use variance does go through, the property is going to essentially look the same as it did, actually probably better because there'd be somebody taking care of the landscaping and such, but it's not going to change the, the character of the neighborhood.
And my recollection is that we've had other applications with respect to the same overall campus that have involved converting school buildings to offices for agencies and things like that.
I don't have that, I don't have that information. This is my first experience with this.
Well, you're familiar with the, the campus on which it is, right?
Correct, correct.
And up at the top where the school used to be, there's now?
Right, okay, right, now there's a daycare there, yeah.
And there's agencies, there's a daycare behind this property, right?
Correct, and then the other bigger, bigger property is now used as the ACCE Institute, which is a religious organization, retreat center. And that was, I believe, a couple of different things over the years. The Heart Association building was there.
And the, the purchaser of the property, that's a for-profit organization, correct?
A non-for-profit organization.
It's a non-for-profit.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
And I think all the other uses in that campus are still not-for-profit?
Yes, there's, there's a temple, there's the, well, the daycare, I don't know if they're for profit or not, but then the, the ACCE Institute, I believe, is non-for-profit as well.
Anyone have any questions or comments?
Do, do we know what kind of offices they're going to be utilizing? I mean, what type of businesses might be there?
It will be, well, could I ask my, the buyer to come up and address that for you?
Sure, sure.
Mr. Dwyer?
We'd love to hear from the buyer.
He actually, I think he has a letter in here.
You could give us your name and address, sir?
Yes, indeed. My name is Dan Dwyer, and I represent the buyers for the property. I live at 167 Orchard Park Boulevard, just a stone's throw from the property. So.
With a good R.
Particular question was?
What, I mean, NFD Services is what?
NF Pro Services. The, for certain, we are hoping, we're still toying with the idea as whether we're going to maintain a focus solely on not-for-profits and supporting not-for-profits with the shared office space, or if it will be a blend of for-profit operations and not-for-profit. That is still to be determined. The type of companies that we have spoken with or have looked at entertaining for the space are outfits that are either just breaking through a home office environment where it's a little too busy to stay in the house, or, in the case of many not-for-profits, they're looking to scramble out of space that they really can't afford because of the fact that there's been such a crunch on budgets as it would relate to not-for-profits. There's 10 former living spaces in the building that are either 10 by 10 or 10 by 12 in their dimension, which works out great for a one- or two-person office environment, and that's the type of user that we're envisioning in the space. Many of these folks would be not even in, in the property more than once or twice a week, maybe three times a week, but be using it as an, as a platform to, to run their, their businesses from.
But at this point, you don't know whether you're going to, what type of, whether you're going to have a doctor's office in there, whether you're going to have a?
Absolutely, no, it would be. No, it would be, it would be small sales outfits, or it would be, again, the concept of the space and utilizing the space, as you heard from our Realtor, is the fact that it was perfect as a convent space as built, and the one just behind, which was similar in its construction, converted nicely to a daycare, but the area doesn't need another daycare. The space in a shared-use environment was contemplated because of my activity on several different not-for-profits. I serve on the board of a few different not-for-profits and have come across many of those not-for-profits who have a need for shared services. In other words, budgeting and accounting support, as well as marketing support, and functions of that type. We're contemplating putting a support, two or three support individual staff in the entranceway area, which served as the living room in the community space, and servicing various companies with those services, with those services.
Any types of examples? I mean, you've given me an idea that it's an office space. What could be going in there?
It could be, it could be an independent Realtor who was working out of his house but chose to not work out of the house any longer. It could be a consulting company who, again, working out of the house but needed support for functions, be it marketing support or accounting support, bookkeeping support or things of that sort, as well as a need for phone answering services and a phone system, and he chose to not, he or she, looking to move out of their home environment. In the letter, we put, there's a new outfit in town based out of the Clinton Square Building called Regis Office Solutions. They are a high-end version of this very same concept, where you would, any number of small, independent, one-person companies looking for a easy access to a space and a space that is supported by staffing services.
Could I add something?
Sure.
It would also be an environment where they would have a mailing address instead of a PO box. They would have a secretary there to let somebody in. They would have shared conference space for meetings, on-premises meetings, which they wouldn't normally have if they were working out of their home. Smaller not-for-profit organizations that, you know, meet in people's kitchens instead of having actual conference room to meet in, those kinds of things.
Thank you. There is, the nature of the space itself, there is a conference room area that has been utilized over the years as a chapel, has been utilized in a number of ways. It's probably 22 by 12 as opposed to, or 26 by 12. That is contemplated as being set up as a shared conference room, so that any of the occupants of the space can book the use of the conference room, things of that sort.
Any, any health services going in there at all, do you know?
There certainly could be individuals in small consulting companies supporting the healthcare industry that we would appeal to as a place where they could function against. But it's certainly not, it's not going to be anything on a doctor's office environment. There aren't going to be no healthcare services provided. There will be no service providers whatsoever in there.
Okay.
Just to clarify. These will be independent, small companies that do the majority of the work either via the telephone or off-site visiting clients, or in a sales environment on the road.
Yeah, very common for salespeople to have that type of structure.
Yeah. Nothing to do with onsite services.
Yeah.
How many spots do you have in the parking lot? We're talking about all these different businesses that may come in. Overhead, I see four in the back, maybe four in the front.
It's actually, it's actually 11 in total.
11 in total.
Plus three spots in the garage.
In the garage.
Yeah, and again, there's, in a maximum environment, we're looking at eight companies, give or take, and don't anticipate the need for more than a dozen cars on the site. Don't anticipate the need for any kind of changes whatsoever, based on parking both sides, north and south.
Any other questions or comments? Anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Come on up and give us your name and address.
Hi, my name is Nafia Zanolovik. I reside at 683 Tarrington Road.
Hi, my name is Ryse Zanolovik. I reside in the city, in 1702 North Goodman Street. I'm going to speak on my sister's behalf and my other sister's behalf, who couldn't make it tonight because of the weather. All right, just some quick history and background with why we're currently opposed and why we have questions about what's going to happen with this property. Previously, the Brotherhood ran their halfway house, or whatever it was, out of this place. I believe they came in here and denied that they were doing that, but we have some information showing where, they've written down that they ran it as a halfway house but weren't approved for it and had to shut it down and all that. So we have some concern over that.
They were here twice. They were denied twice.
Correct. They denied that they were running a halfway house to begin with, but then, you know, all of a sudden, in their listing or whatever it was, they write that they were operating a halfway house. The current property, obviously, it's been described. My question is whether or not the property has been shown to any doctor's offices or something along those lines, to see if they can get some interest in that. The company that is looking to buy the property, the NF Pro, NF Pro, or whatever it's called, there's little to no information available on that business in public records checks and online. The address given for NF Pro Services is listed as 620 Park Avenue, Suite 315. However, 620 Park Avenue is a UPS store with PO boxes, and the PO boxes are referred to as suites or apartments. So we have no information on that. The business plan for the use of the property is very vague. Even tonight, some of the answers given about how they intend to use it and fill it seem kind of vague. We have some concerns, obviously, with how the property was run previously and how it's going to be used in the future, because we don't want similar things to occur in our The residents in the neighborhood have received no communication regarding the pending sale or what they're planning on doing. I believe the way my sister found out about the appeal was through the sign on the building that said it was scheduled for a meeting. There's no other information given. So chances are-
Just as, just as a point of clarification, that's the reason that we have the applicants put signs in front of the property.
I understand that.
It's the reason that we insist that the sign actually be visible and displayed, and if it's not, we table the consideration of the application, and notices are sent to homeowners within, or neighbors within a certain specified radius, right? So if she didn't receive it, it's because she's outside of that radius, but those-
Tarrington Road runs right behind this property?
Well, but Donna or Michelle or someone from the town can address what the-
Within 200 feet of 1280 North Winton Road is the circumference.
The radius of it, right. Okay, got you. Okay.
There's also published, the agenda with all the applications is published in the Arundicoid Post as well.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify that notice aspect. I didn't want to leave it hanging that the notices, that anything's trying to be done behind the backs of people in the neighborhood or anything like that.
I wasn't trying to insinuate that, just as a matter of clarification on our end of it. I appreciate you clarifying that. Excuse me. The property, I'm sorry, the businesses planning on purchasing the property, the NF Pro Services, you know, what their not-for-profit is and what they're going to be working on, again, that's very vague. We weren't able to find any information on that. We'd like to know what kind of not-for-profits they are. The Brotherhood that was there was a not-for-profit, but they were running a halfway house. So there's general consensus from the neighborhood, the street that runs behind it is 683, or Tarrington Road. There's a circle right behind it. There's actually an exit of the parking lot that goes out to the traffic circle, excuse me, to the cul-de-sac, I should say. And everybody's genuinely concerned about what's going to happen with this property, where this company came from, and who they're planning on serving as a not-for-profit. And not to mention renting out the office space, who are they going to rent it out Sorry, just want to make sure I don't miss anything on behalf of my other sister who couldn't be here. The name, Dan Dwyer, I'm sorry, I believe he's here tonight, doing an online search, you know, with that information, running, checking his name online, shows 44 judgments against him and his companies with Monroe County. Also, there's 59 land records, including foreclosures and liens. So we're able to find a bunch of information, but nothing on the business, so we don't know where they're going with it. Am I missing? Okay. All right, that's all I have, I'm sorry. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, for the record, I would indicate that we received an email with some attachments from Dorita Tahirovic, I may not have pronounced that correctly, which have been distributed to the board prior to the, to the hearing. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Is there anyone that wishes to address the application in some fashion?
To address the case.
And now I'll call upon the applicant and Mr. Dwyer to address anything that was raised during the public hearing.
It would be my pleasure.
Okay.
First of all, I had some wonderful conversations with the folks on Hallmore Drive over the course of the last several days. I waited until they were given notice about it, and when the sign was up, found a couple of fellow parishioners that I didn't know lived on Hallmore, but found no one in opposition to what we had described either in our application or in my conversations with them. That's one thing. I've been a resident of Arundicoid, 14609, for the last 33 years. I've owned and operated no less than four businesses inside Arundicoid. My record as a business owner in and around the community, I'll stand behind without any issue whatsoever. The name, I could have put my name on the top of this application without any hesitation. The name NF Pro Services is a DBA that's being contemplated to launch a new service business at a particular location. No other history exists for it because it hasn't ever operated, but I have operated several businesses in the community and have lived in this community in particular for the last 23 years, less than a quarter mile from this location. So the idea that I would be trying to introduce a business into the community that would be anything but a wonderful complement to what's going on in that former school, church, convent complex is absurd, absurd. So with that, I have no other comments.
The Jewish dad in?
I'm sorry?
The Jewish dad in?
Yes, I would. As far as the history of the building with the Brotherhood of St. Joseph, I just would like to stress the fact that they're trying to sell the property and to move on and to turn it over to someone else. So to have concern about the prior use of the property when someone else is trying to turn over a new leaf, I think, is unfounded. They have nothing to do with the purchase of this property, they just want to be done with it, so they're not behind this in any way, shape, or form.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? All right, we'll close that hearing and move on to the next item on our agenda then.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1310-5. Upon the matter of request by APD Engineering Architects, acting as agent for Aldi Incorporated for area variances to construct a 16,852 plus or minus square foot Aldi store exceeding maximum allowable square footage and front setback on premises 2194 Hudson Avenue in a mixed-use commercial district in R5 residential district.
Hi, good evening. My name is Steve Kleason. Better to do the swearing-in. I do have a PowerPoint that you, that I brought with me. I believe you guys have copies of it as well. We can go into that prior to opening the public hearing after whatever. This is going to be similar to the one I presented before, just some updates to it.
Your address, please?
Yeah, mine, I'm with, representing APD Engineering. We're out of 615 Fisher's Run, Victor, New York.
And if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. We are going to watch your PowerPoint, I think is how you wanted to start off, right?
That is perfectly fine.
All right, so we'll step down so that we can see it as well, and-
Can I use one of these mics?
No, that's fine. And we're also going to be switching attorneys for this application. Mr. Primo's going to join us. Mr. Orelli's going to step aside for this application, because Mr. Primo is more familiar with this application.
Sorry, I'm going to have to pee, brother. Yeah, I just, what I've done is I've updated it for some information that was, we've done with the planning board in evaluating the project. So, oops, I bought that. Again, I'm going to probably go through some of this fairly quickly since you've already seen it. This is the overview of the site and where it's located. These were the goals of the articles, and we did discuss those in detail last time I presented this. These are the, this is the site as it's been modified, and a couple of things that I wanted to point out to the board that kind of outlined some of the changes we've made. Again, I forgot my laser pointer, so I'll have to walk up here. Working with the staff and the planning board, we've outlined this and added a bike rack here. We've added additional benches up in this area and expanded this open area to allow for a better flow. There is going to be, there's a crosswalk here on the site plan. It doesn't show up on this drawing, I apologize, but there is a crosswalk here and a crosswalk here. You can see we're adding a, the basically handicap ramp here. There's going to be a handicap ramp here and here, because this will eventually come in and interconnect back all the way to this R5 area here, so that that all flows through the project and out to the Hudson Road Avenue area. Some of the enhancements that we've added and working, again, with the planning board and the staff, this is a hedge row that's all along the front here to help buffer the parking area, as well as this, these are some of the water, landscaped water areas that will actually take the runoff, cleanse it, clean it, run it all back through to this area, and then treat it. I know a lot of those are planning board issues, but they do address some of the amenities that we've added in regards to looking at the alternatives for this project. Again, some of the pedestrians, the couple, the one change that we've made here from the previous time you saw this, we had talked about the pedestrian access up in this front, but what we've done is enhanced this to bring this pedestrian access all the way back in here with the idea that this residential, when it does develop, would be able to flow all the way through, and so we're making those provisions now in this design to include Again, you have seen this one before, I'm not going to spend a lot of time. It's just that the way this is opened up and the way it's designed allows a lot of that view shed to be visible from Hudson Avenue, and that's going to be important, because when we look at some of the alternative that some of the public has provided back to- at some of the alternative that some of the public has provided back to us, we've looked at that with your staff and your planning board, and what that would do is that would greatly diminish that ability to see that open space and ravine that is being dedicated to the town. Again, we did do kind of an open overlay quickly. This was given to you last time, and it just shows you that what happens when we put this building up along the front here, which is one of the variances we've requested, here, here, or this, but what it does do is it creates this area that we split up the whole project. And now, what we've done is you've taken resident, or retail facilities that typically have one entrance, and you're requiring two entrances because now you're going to have the people from the front and the people from the rear having to come into two different areas. And what we talk about in this and we brought to the planning board's attention is you really, instead of making a mixed use, you actually have separated the uses. You've taken your pedestrian access along Hudson Avenue and separated it from those who are coming in and using the vehicle. What we do with our design is now it's open. You actually have people that come in here can flow out to Hudson Avenue. So, somebody can park here, visit one of the retail facilities here, actually go down to the sidewalk and go to a facility here, a facility here, or if this does develop along the frontage here, they can go across the street and visit any of the other facilities in an open manner. Where if this is up here along the front, they park in the back, it becomes like more inclusive that they're going to get in their car, drive back across, and then come back into here, then they actually visit the area along Hudson Avenue. So, that's one of the reasons why we feel that this actually works better and suits us for the actual flow of the pedestrian access along Hudson Avenue. Again, what are we, this is one of the variances that we're looking for, was the frontage. Now, there's Retail B and Retail is the variance. Prior to Retail B is the 4,000 square feet that's in that green area. Remember, we showed you the full build-out later. So, there is prior to B and then after to B because once we build that third building, we're not in front of the planning board for that, but we did consider that in our presentations earlier. So, what we would be looking for is the variance there for the 36% now with the understanding that it would actually drop down to actually a variance 22% later once we put in that second building. And then, there's also the variance for C because of the, on the other side of the road, there is the perspective that there would be an outlot there that would have, we showed it as a drive-through. That one actually has an easement right through the center of it, and we talked about that. That's that drainage easement. We can't build over that, so there's no way we can put a building into that facility Reasons, we went through all these last time. I don't know if you want me to spend the time to go through each one of them, but you guys have copies of them. Again, I did go through them last time in the last presentation, so if you don't mind, I'll skip forward on this one. Again, this is the landscape area. I just kind of walked you through that. Actually, you can now see the crosswalks in this area in this one. This is the perspective from the road in the ability for us to look at the alternatives and try to present it better to the planning board and the staff. We created this in a three-dimensional so you can see a better idea of what it would look like when it's developed. One of the concerns came from the other side of what would look like along this road. What we did in working with the staff and the planning board, we added, these windows were in there, and we've added these additional shrubs and landscaping to break that up. If you also look at the architecture, all these pilasters here, and then there's a watermark across the entire bottom. So, we have enhanced that architecture along that whole side. The building footprint, again, we were just showing that the, this was addressed in the last meeting, but the New York State Building Code would consider this building to be a separate building from this one. What we are looking for on this variance on the building size is for this. If you cut it off in this area, which I'll show you on the next slide, this is actually below the 15,000. This is, what we're asking for in this variance is to allow this to bring this loading dock out to the end and bring it out and away from the development. Again, there you can see the two different sizes of the, and why we're requesting the variance. And again, we, reasons for the hardships. Again, this is the same exact slide you saw before, so I won't spend a lot of time on it. Again, this is enhanced, again, with the updated footprint, and it's really, I just brought it up again for the last time in closing out this. One of the questions that was, you know, brought up was the distance and where that green space is, and I had, that's where the 95-foot setback was for the, in regard for the planning board's questions. So, that is the PowerPoint, and this with the modifications of the latest planning board site plan that was actually approved by the site, or the planning board already. So, in addition to that, I also have, and again, I can now close this and raise that back up for you. We also have given you a letter that responded to some of the comments that came in previously. That's been given to you already.
You can just give us a minute to get it covered.
Yep.
What I, I'm not going to spend a lot of time with this letter, but I did want to bring it to your point that I did respond, and I apologize that it was received today, but with the holidays and everything, and it wasn't received by the town, I believe, until basically the first, recently, I don't know if it was within the last day or so. And so, I turned it around as quickly as possible and got it back to you today. But in that, I gave you basically six items that are, outlines the reasoning, why we feel this addresses the concerns and of the project. And we also talk about the building's location and how it's helped with the noise. Many of these items were discussed in great length in the Seeker as well as the site plan approvals, on why we orientated the buildings the way we did, why we felt the variances was necessary to allow that loading dock to get extended out to there, and why the frontage variances were requested so that we could get that flow to the pedestrian access out to the Hudson Avenue area. I am available for questions, or I can wait until after you're completed the public hearing to answer anything that comes up during that time.
I just have a question about, you had mentioned just a moment ago, as we were looking at the slides, Retail Space A, Retail Space B, and then Retail Space C, but you mentioned that it, the potential for that to be there, but you said you can't develop on it because it's got the easement of the, of the drainage.
That would be on, let me grab a plan, so I'm not, if we were looking at, this is an overall site plan.
Yep, I got it.
Okay. C is located here on the south side of the dedicated road.
Right.
There is an easement.
I see it.
Okay.
Yep.
So, we can, we can, we can place parking over that, but we can't place a building over it. So, for us later on to try to create that frontage along that lot would be virtually impossible with that easement in that location. And so, what we've done is orientate the conceptual building. This is not in front of the planning board. What we did is locate it that way. Based on this orientation, that would be what the variance requirement would be.
So, at this point, the planning board has approved A, right?
That is correct.
How about potential B?
No, what they did do is they looked at that for seeker purposes, and that would be for traffic, stormwater, any of the environmental issues, but they did not look at it from the site plan approval process.
And then, C is not even on the board, not on the table at all yet.
That is correct, too. We only looked at that, again, for seeker purposes and the traffic impacts and those items that would impact the environment.
Okay.
And my understanding is that there's been a negative declaration by the town board.
By the planning board, the planning board.
Or by the planning, okay. And I've asked Mr. Primo to review for everyone here tonight exactly what it is that we are being asked to address, and equally as important, what we are not addressing. Because a lot of times, there's confusion as to what exactly we are and are not having in front of us, so.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As has been indicated before, the planning board had went through and did their, their review process of this. They had done their review as the lead agency under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. The zoning board of appeals had been an involved agency, but it consented to the planning board being the lead agency. Once the planning board as lead agency issues a negative declaration, that in essence ends the seeker process for all the other agencies that are involved, and that was the process that is followed here. You've all, the board has been given a copy of the negative declaration. When the planning board did this, they also looked at the issues under the town code, particularly under the mixed-use commercial code concerning various factors, and had granted both preliminary and final site plan approval and subdivision approval, and had also made positive referrals both to the town board and this board. Of course, the planning board's approvals are subject to the variances, but they had really gone through and looked at the typical site plan issues concerning the size of the building, features of it such as lighting, the roadways, and all those sorts of things. So, what really was left to, for two other boards to take up, one of which is the zoning board of appeals, and the other is the town board, is for this board, you have the frontage variance and the area variance. For the town board, they still have the acceptance of the public improvements. It's really when the town board accepts a public improvements that allows the building to go from 8,000 feet up to that 15, and then we need, they're requesting a slight area variance now for the loading areas to get it up to that, the next piece. So, really, the issues perhaps to talk about aren't before you is typical site plan issues, and those things have been addressed by, by the planning board. Also, what's not before you is the idea of, well, is a public, is there public benefit from public improvements? That's something that's going to be decided by the town board. What really is before you are these two, two variances, the frontage variance and the area variance. As I say, Seeker is done. Obviously, there are factors, though you do consider with granting the variance, and those are still part of your consideration.
Any other questions, comments that anyone has?
Yes, I'm starting to get very confused about this whole thing. I apologize because it's, to me, it's a difficult thing to follow, and I'm trying not to make this more complicated than it really is, but I'm just trying to understand, the building, the main building, as he represented with brown right here.
Uh huh.
That's the one that we're considering all these variances for, the frontage and the area. Now, I see on other sheets that this one part of that building says proposed retail. That's, that's not Aldi's, then?
That's correct. That is not Aldi's.
But it would be owned by them, or how, how does that work? Is it under their jurisdiction, or they're just going to build the building for them and maybe rent it out or something?
Aldi would actually own the property and would lease to a tenant.
Okay. Okay, that's why it's all part of the same color.
Correct. They would actually own all of the property that would be in the MUC zoning. That is where the subdivision line was drawn.
Then I, why wouldn't the extended loading dock be the same color? Isn't that part of this?
It actually is.
I'm sorry, that, I apologize, but.
Oh, it's in another place.
This is the extended loading dock that you're giving the variance on. This is where the truck sits. It's not part of the building.
Okay.
So, that's, that's why you don't see that. But this brown area here is part of the building. That's what we're asking for variance for, the area that goes behind.
Okay, it's clearing up for me now a little bit. Thank you.
Okay.
My question is the, the minimum front build-out requested variance. The variance is 22%, 48% is what was requested, 70% is code. We're all wondering, the front build-out, it means what? Is that the front setback?
No, it's actually the amount of the building that would be facing Hudson Avenue. So, that 70%, the way the code is written, 70% of the building has to front, so.
All right, that would, that would make, that means, that's why people have asked to turn it around, or turn it on a different.
Correct. Again, that's, and we've gone through it numerous times on why we feel this lays out better, but that is exactly what you're, you're asking.
Okay. So, there's no setback issue?
No, that was addressed previously, that your staff had given you a breakdown of the average. That's based on the average of all the different buildings adjacent to it, and that we, we did not need a variance for.
So, in other words, the Wegmans across the street is, has the front of the store facing the street. You would like Aldi's to turn sideways like you explained, so that way people could see the ravine and they could see through it, and that way the parking is in, along the side of the building as opposed to behind the building and pedestrian foot traffic.
Exactly.
But essentially, you just want the building to be at a 90-degree angle as opposed to parallel to the street.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
And then, the extra square footage, that other variance is to allow for the loading dock to be at the back instead of closer to the street?
Yes, correct. Actually, the, this, this has nothing to do with the amount of square footage we're allowed on the parcel. It's strictly the amount of square footage you're allowed for one building. Our actual design is far below what we would be allowed to have as a full development based on square footage of the parcel. It's just the size of the individual buildings that we're here for.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to this application?
Gentlemen, good evening. My name is Jeff Goldblatt, 128 Parkside Crescent. I am a co-founder and co-chair of Helping Arondiquay Plan for Progress, the hip organization soon to begin our 16th year of success. At the outset, let me make our position perfectly clear. We do not object to the idea of an Aldi's in this district, but rather how it's been proposed. Aldi's consciously chose this location where individual building size and orientation are clearly restricted. We believe Aldi's could, with several adjustments, develop a plan that stays within the dimensional standards and prohibited uses in this district, and would better respect the goals and objectives of this community-generated town-adopted plan. We also believe that the building size requirement should have been handled as a use variance. Because of that, we detailed both the area and use variances in the packet we sent to you last week. Let's review for those watching the five factors for an area variance. First, is there a possible change to the neighborhood character? In terms of both the building frontage and size variances, the answer is yes. The front, the frontage variance would result in a significant deviation from the vision for development, and as for the size, a virtual solid brick wall at almost 260 feet in length completely blocks the southern view of the entire first building of the nearby Arondiquay Village Apartments. Without the warehouse tunnel of nearly 1,700 feet combined with a relocation of the 5,000 square foot retail, which we believe ultimately will be a dollar store, these would alleviate the obstructed view. Are there alternative solutions that wouldn't require a variance? Yes, there are. However, to date, the applicant has expressed little desire or attempt to develop alternative solutions, and those that have been submitted have been dismissed out of hand over newfound concerns about delivery truck turning radiuses as opposed to the pedestrian goals of the district, and odd when packer truck turning radiuses and accesses have routinely been ignored when other commercial projects have come forward. Is the variance substantial? In terms of both the building size and the frontage variance, the answer again is yes. It's interesting to note that the total mass of the proposed structure is 21,669 square feet, which exceeds the maximum 15,000 square feet by 6,667 square feet. Without incentives, the total mass is about three times the size of the base maximum of 8,000 square feet. The total size is the true building scale the neighborhood will experience within this proposal. It's a building with a wall. As for the frontage, the applicant's request deviates greater than 50% from the code's requirement of 70%. And again, the applicant has refused to consider other solutions. Are there adverse effects on physical or environmental conditions? We do wonder, with all the focus on truck turning radiuses and how the northern wall will supposedly protect the apartment residents from the frequency and level of all truck noises and emissions that are expected noises and emissions that are expected with this proposal. And number five, is the situation self-created? Absolutely. As we believe this should have been treated as a use variance, let's just take a moment and answer those four questions. First and second, no reasonable return on investment and unique circumstances. While we're not privy to Aldi's economic rationale for this endeavor, we're certain the circumstances are not unique. According to the Monroe County Real Property Database, two of the seven Aldi's have operated successfully in this area with a gross floor area close to the maximum of 15,000 square feet. The Penfield Aldi's is 15,180, and the Webster Aldi's is 15,291. It's also very interesting to note that the 2001 Aldi's proposed for this site, two years before the master plan was adopted, this is the master plan, came in at 14,025 with a ground-mounted monument sign as opposed to, dare I say it, a huge sign standing in front of the building just so, according to the applicant, people won't get lost finding this place, just yards away from a dead-end intersection. The request to exceed the maximum gross floor area is most definitely self-created, as Aldi's intentionally chose this district for this store. As three alternative site plans have shown, the buildings can be reoriented to eliminate the need for the tunnel, or the 5,000 square-foot spec space can be built separately or eliminated altogether, thereby eliminating the need to exceed the maximum building size. Lastly, not only will granting this size variance change the character of the immediate neighborhood by permitting something that would not have been allowed prior to the adoption of the code, it will alter the character of all neighborhoods bordering the district. If you grant the size variance, we will believe you will effectively nullify the proposed, the prohibited use, rather, section of this code, setting a precedent for any future applicant with a reasonably good attorney to exceed the standard simply because they prefer it and were never asked to stay within them. Therefore, it is our recommendation that the area variance is be denied, with the whole application sent back to the proverbial drawing board, to be recrafted, this time to fully comport with the code as it was originally intended. And that is my message.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to this application?
Larry McDonald, 155 Drake Drive. I'm with the Brookview Area Neighborhood Association, and I've been following this fairly closely. It seems that the Planning Board has been quite up on this issue. I'd like to compare what happened to I-Square, where the town made him toe the line and comply with all of the code, and the Planning Board seems to just pass this happily when, in fact, this project does not come up to the standard of MUX in so many ways. It's, a couple of benches and a bicycle rack are supposed to be a meeting place, and it's not a meeting place. So we are opposed to this, and, and something else has come up that occurred to me. There are about 75 car spots in this project. If you were to entertain the idea of rezoning this, or giving a variance of this, you really ought to look at the property in the back, because that's our five, and you could have, say, six or eight, four apartment buildings, and maybe 100 people, all of them with cars, and just do a really bad job of messing up traffic on Hudson Avenue. I would think that would be better if you were going to pass this, it would be better if you rezoned at our seven. But this does not come up to the standard of MUX, and we're asking you to turn it down.
I just want to make one thing clear. We don't rezone anything.
Okay.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Is there anyone that wishes to address this application without speaking for or against it?
Before I forget, can we mention the, the handout that we got, the person who sent the alternative drawings and...
Yes, we received communication from Mike Governally, and attached to it was a, some other communications, and there was also a letter from Howard Decker, and a letter from Richard DeSara, all of which were in opposition to the, some aspect or another of the application. Did the applicant wish to address the issues that were raised during the public input portion of the hearing?
Yes.
If you could come back up then? And before you start, I had a question. How long? I know that I've lived in my current residence for 33 years, which isn't far from there. My recollection is that for that entire time that I've lived there, this property has been for sale?
Yes, I believe so. I cannot speak exactly, and I do not believe the owner is here today, but I know that...
Been decades that it's been for sale?
Yes.
Okay. So we have 55 years that it's been for sale over here? All right.
Okay, well, first of all, I wanted to speak to the character and of the neighborhood, and one of the things that we took a lot of time with the Planning Board and the staff that seems to, I think it's misportrayed sometimes in some of the comments that are made, is that the mixed-use, the way it's written, was a gathering place, and, you know, what we keep being told is, well, you're, you're not going to have pedestrian access because you're not putting the building up on the road. But nobody is saying why that's going to improve pedestrian access. We've gone through great detail to explain why this orientation will improve pedestrian access. One is, pedestrian access now can flow both ways, easily and comfortably, and it's been seen over and over again, when you make it convenient, that it does work. If you've, if you've seen a lot of the areas where the downtown area is where you see a lot of this kind of mixed-use, and where you see the front, the buildings are brought up to the front, and it's where a lot of the planners have developed this kind of a zoning in hopes that you could create that downtown venue. But where you've seen that downtown venue, in many areas, you've seen them open up the center area and create this kind of upward center feel to get that parking to flow through, because they know that if you cut that off, the parking disappears and people don't access those properties, and in many cases, unless you have numerous amounts of parking, the retail just doesn't thrive. It just, it has no way. People are so convinced, or so needy of the convenience of being able to park a vehicle and go to their retail facility, and that's what they want when they visit these facilities, and that's what makes them successful. So what we've done is we've combined the ability to make it very accessible for the vehicles as well as the pedestrians along Hudson Avenue, and therefore, and by doing that and encircling the buildings, we also created that center field, exactly what is described within the MUC. So, you know, one of the things that's unique about this property is that there is a ravine, and there is some area up along the front. So you are going to have to at some point create a mixed-use, and we don't see any other way that would make this as beneficial as what this is, and still take the benefits of this property, that being the ravine and the green space that's being dedicated to this town, and still allow it to be an asset to those actually on Hudson Avenue, and by keeping it somewhat open, that's what you get to enjoy.
By the ravine and green space, are you referring to what was possible retail C?
No, actually, behind retail C, we are actually dedicating a piece of land right here, and then the, the town is actually talking with the landowners that are selling to us to actually get another acreage in the back, I believe, and again, I don't want to misquote, but I think somewhere in the area, another two acres, or maybe it's with the combined, it's two acres. The whole ravine and area would become dedicated to the town, and I know those talks have started. I can't, and I've said before to the other board, we have no ability to secure that property. It's not within the agreement that we have before this board or the Planning Board. But what we did do is we talked to the landowner, and we initiated them to discuss that with the town, and I believe that those talks are already underway.
And the, the access to Hudson, that would be at the intersection that's presently controlled by a traffic light, correct?
Correct. There is very limited locations to put access to Hudson Avenue because of the existing traffic light. To make it accessible and keep your good traffic control and corridor control, you need to line those with that traffic signal, and that's what we've done. What we, what we also have done is we've moved and tried to put that pedestrian access in multiple locations, and the key one is into the center of the actual development, and the idea that it can then spread out throughout the facility and come back and utilize that.
Is there any information on what the pedestrian traffic along Hudson Avenue is of businesses that are there now?
I can only speak to one of the comments that was made during the public hearing, that individual says that they walk up and down it, and they don't see a lot of foot traffic at all, and that it's filled with weeds and brush and has, at least against it, I'm paraphrasing, that they feel like they need to run past that location. So I can, and then there's also been comments about kids being down in the ravine and it being unsafe, and that was one of the things we brought up with the Planning Board, that this would actually, with the dedicated road, would allow access for patrol vehicles to actually get closer to the area, to better monitor that area for safety reasons. And in regards to the other parts of the character of the building is, or the character of the neighborhood, we purposely rotated that building was to turn that loading dock away from the apartment complex and provide, you know, a better, reduce sound impacts to the apartment complex. You know, it's overly, you know, expressed by the opposition in times that if you don't put it right up on the road, then you're not addressing anything. And in regards to that, we actually went into great detail to address as many as the concerns of the entire neighborhood and the corridor when we laid out this as proposed, and that's why we came up with this. It's, again, we understand that the, the frontage area, that there is two numbers that we presented to you, and that would be that when that second building would do, that would actually go down, so if that was a condition that, you know, that you understand that in the future sometime that would be reduced, we're not actually, I mean, would have to be reduced, because if you put a building in there, it automatically goes down. So, but at this point, we do have to look at the single building, because that's what's presented by the Planning Board. I think it, in regards to it being substantial, I look at two parts of that, is I don't see any of this being substantial when you look at the total square footage of the, you know, on the building side, and I don't look at it as a frontage, when you look at that as actually benefiting the neighbors in the, in respect to the sound and the control. It wasn't just the truck access and the truck noise, it was also the parking lot noise. One of the things this does now is that it creates, that building actually creates a buffer to the apartment complex for the noise that would be generated within the parking facility, as well as the future building, the 4,000 square foot, would actually offer another buffer to the residents to the south. So both of those actually provide kind of a barrier for that noise in that as well as, and again, also, you know, all that put together, you know, kind of mitigates and creates that character that we're trying to put together.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes.
Yes.
I look at this as one of the most important decisions we've ever made, and I live near Hudson Avenue too, and I enjoy the woods. I don't really have to run by it. I think it's a nice green area in the town. And then when this project came up, I was really wondering which way to go on this. It's a very sensitive issue, I think. There's a lot of pros, a lot of cons. And we agreed, I think somewhere along the line, that the Planning Board would be the lead agency with this?
To do the SEAKER review.
To do the SEAKER review. Does that mean we take their advice better than we normally would, or?
No, it means they did all the work on the environmental impact stuff so that we didn't...
So they took care of it.
We weren't tasked with that. They were. They meet twice a month. They have more time.
They, they have approved this plan, right?
Yes. Yes.
So what's left is for us to approve it or to not. That's why I feel the, a lot of pressure here. I'm very sensitive to the people who live in the area, who have concerns about the environment, that ravine, what's going to happen next, and so on. And I realize that this project does not address the ravine and all that stuff, right?
Well, actually, it does. We, we're prepared to dedicate our portion to the town, so it'll be forever green, giving a permanent buffer to the residents to the south. And we've actually extended to go even further, again, I spoke to this just a couple minutes ago, but we've taken the seller, who owns the entire parcel, and put them into discussions with the town to dedicate the rest of that land, which would be the full ravine, in hopes that the town can create the, they're trying to create a flood control system within that area as well. So it would be a forever green park area, and it would actually help to resolve the flooding issues that were down in that area. So, again, I'm not completely sure on how that will progress now that there's been some modifications within the town, but that was well on its way, and during the Planning Board, Larry had discussed that the town had already submitted for a grant, I believe, to the, to actually do that work within that to, for the flood control. So, and that was why it was important to try to get the town and the property owner to discuss, you know, getting that land to the town. So we have gone a long ways to secure that property for forever wild.
Has the Planning Board had any comments or addressed questions about that retail space that's going to be built as part of this but not named about what's going to be, what it's going to be? Have they, did they ask any?
Well, they haven't, they haven't requested, because, I mean, at this point, quite honestly, we've had some interest, but nobody specifically has talked to us, and we've had a number of, like, brokers call and say, you know, how big is it, what size is it? We have people that might be interested, but the retail world is kind of interesting. A lot of times, people don't like to disclose who's who, because if the rumor gets out that so-and-so's going there, then, you know, somebody else comes and makes them an offer somewhere else. So there's a lot of, you know, smoke and mirrors that goes on, but we do believe that there won't be an issue once this project gets built. Aldi is very, very well-known throughout the world, not just in our area, but throughout the world, and there's a lot of retailers that like to be located within the area of Aldi. And again, you know, many of them are, you know, anywhere from a restaurant to, you know, there's been a number of different Usters that like to follow and be close to them.
And the Planning Board did consider the full site buildout, including that, that space and the other spaces, and even made sure that the utilities and everything would be sized to serve the back property that can be developed for residential?
Yes, we did, especially in the traffic area, where that's been raised a number of times that concern, and we did include in our traffic evaluation the apartments and what could be developed, and, and again, Larry indicated that he thought we had actually probably put more units in there than we could actually build based on the ravine and some of the other concerns that were there.
I just want to make a comment that the Planning Board is a, is a fine group of people, and I have a lot of respect for them, and their endorsement of this project carries a lot of weight with me personally. Not that I always agree with them, but, but they're a good, good bunch of people, and I, I respect that, you know, their research and their decision.
Can you put into a measurement the distance from the store as it's designed to the nearest R1 residential homes at the end of the lot?
What I did do, and it was approximately 95 to 100 feet, was from the dedicated road to the R1. We didn't do it to the apartment complex, but the question was asked about the residence to the south, and we did do that. That was actually on one of the presentations that we had there.
So you're saying it's about 100 feet?
95 to 100 feet. That's too, strictly to the dedicated road, where, you know, obviously, that would be a sound generator, so we, that's what we did, is we took it to that location, not the building.
The south side of the creek, right?
Correct.
That'd be Dale Side Drive?
No, we went from our dedicated road to the nearest property line, the R1 property line.
Okay. What, I think what was being asked was from the front of the store to the R1 as opposed to the road. opposed to the road to the R1.
Well, actually I was thinking of the, the deepest part of the store, from there to the closest R1.
When you say R1 zoning or?
Uh, well, single, single family.
Closest home.
Okay, from the, I don't have that measurement because what we did was, the concern was, what would be the impact to that closest residence? So we took, the, the closest impact was, at this time with this project, would be the, um, dedicated road. So we looked at that and when we did 95 to 100, the, the planning board, I mean, that's well beyond most, you know, buffer areas and that's completely staying forever green because that land is actually being dedicated to the town, so it's not going to be developed in the future.
Well, you measured from the dedicated road, but if you measured from the store itself, it would actually be more than 100.
Oh, yeah, considerably more.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, I think I actually have a cut of where that is. I think we meant that from here to here, I had this on this property, but you see from the dedicated road back to this?
Right.
R1.
Right.
That was where the, and that was like we were saying, it was very similar to some of the most.
Exactly.
Grided, you know, buffers around 100 feet.
So if we went from here to the store itself?
Oh, yeah, you're closer to probably.
200 or more?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Again, we just, you know, we wanted to make sure that we looked at the impacts as a whole, not strictly the building.
Any other questions or comments from the board? We'll close the hearing with respect to this matter and we will be in recess until 20 minutes of nine.[718.70] minutes of nine.
The applicants for Winton Road are still here, and the applicant for Hudson is still
here, so we're going to take up consideration of the, uh, applications in the order that they appear on the agenda. No one wants to leave tonight. Okay. All right. The first application is with respect to, uh, One Whipple Lane. This is a type-two action for seeker purposes. Uh, does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this application, uh, for tasteful connections, uh, with the following findings. Uh, first of all, the, uh, certainly no change to the character of the neighborhood, uh, because we're talking about inside, uh, renovation. Uh, because of the state law, there, there are no alternatives to, uh, to be considered regarding, regard, requiring, uh, that would not require a variance. Uh, it's not that substantial a request. Uh, we're talking nine parking spaces, and based on the findings of the, uh, uh, what, what was presented with the intended use, that should not be a problem at all. Uh, certainly no effect on the environmental or physical conditions, uh, of the area, of the building, anywhere around it. Uh, it's just not that kind of a variance, and is it self-created? It is, but it isn't, because I think what the people are trying to do here is, is adhere to the, to the law. And in so doing, um, they will have opportunity to expand their business, and I think any time a business in Aranda Coe can expand and grow, uh, I'm all for supporting it. That's my motion.
Second.
I'd like to add some conditions, if possible.
Okay.
What Mr. Thompson, um, condition that she does get letters from the other two businesses in the building, uh, stating that they do not mind that she'll be utilizing their spaces at, uh, from time to time, and also a condition from the landlord, that he's okay with that, and also if he would be okay of using the parking lot when needed behind the building in case it runs short.
I'd, I'd only go to the landlord, the person who owns the property. I don't know that we would have to have letters from the tenants. What if the tenant changes in another six months and doesn't agree? I mean, do you think we need a letter from the tenants and the landlord, or just the landlord?
I do only because, I mean, the tenants aren't, the other two tenants aren't here, and all of a sudden, she's, she's got permission to use all their parking spots.
But if the landlord gives permission and the tenants don't, well, then what happens? The landlord owns the property. I mean, I don't know what the other board members think. I, I would have no problem-
Well, you're saying if you got, the landlord gives them permission.
If the landlord gives permission, if we get a letter from the landlord, I think that's a sufficient condition. I don't know that we'd need the landlord and the other tenants.
Yeah, but wouldn't the landlord have to, uh, wouldn't the landlord have to make his tenants happy? Wouldn't it, wouldn't it-
Well, that's something between the landlord and the landlord's tenants.
Again, uh, my condition is letters, um, from both. Uh, you know, if, if you want to change it, it's up to-
Well, I could withdraw my second, you could second, with those additional changes, and Mr. Thomas could, of course, agree to them.
That's what I was gonna say.
Okay.
Are you withdrawing your second?
So Mr. LaPerry is seconding the motion-
With?
With two conditions, approval of the landlord for use of the parking spaces, and approval of the other tenants for use of the parking spaces.
Right, I just don't wanna, uh, push the tenants or take over their spots without their knowledge or their approval.
My, uh-
I want them to all get along.
My sense on the other tenants is that the sign was out in front. Certainly, they couldn't have missed it, and they didn't express any opposition, so I would assume that the lack of opposition, uh, speaks volumes by itself, but I don't have a problem having them submit that.
And I think they would be appreciative of the thought.
Right, I, I think, right, I think if they were to approach them and say, hey, we're looking for approval with your blessing, and that would, that would make them all happy.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six votes in favor, uh, no opposed, no abstentions, and no members are absent. Next, uh, item on the agenda is the application pertaining to twelve eighty North Winton Road. This is a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this application, uh, for tasteful connections, uh, with the following findings. Uh, first of all, the, uh, certainly no change to the character of the neighborhood, uh, because we're talking about inside, uh, renovation. Uh, because of the state law, there, there are no alternatives to, uh, to be considered regarding, regard, requiring, uh, that would not require a variance. Uh, it's not that substantial a request. Uh, we're talking nine parking spaces, and based on the findings of the, uh, uh, what, what was presented with the intended use, that should not be a problem at all. Uh, certainly no effect on the environmental or physical conditions, uh, of the area, of the building, anywhere around it. Uh, it's just not that kind of a variance, and is it self-created? It is, but it isn't, because I think what the people are trying to do here is, is adhere to the, to the law. And in so doing, um, they will have opportunity to expand their business, and I think any time a business in Aranda Coe can expand and grow, uh, I'm all for supporting it. That's my motion.
Second.
I'd like to add some conditions, if possible.
Okay.
What Mr. Thompson, um, condition that she does get letters from the other two businesses in the building, uh, stating that they do not mind that she'll be utilizing their spaces at, uh, from time to time, and also a condition from the landlord, that he's okay with that, and also if he would be okay of using the parking lot when needed behind the building in case it runs short.
I'd, I'd only go to the landlord, the person who owns the property. I don't know that we would have to have letters from the tenants. What if the tenant changes in another six months and doesn't agree? I mean, do you think we need a letter from the tenants and the landlord, or just the landlord?
I do only because, I mean, the tenants aren't, the other two tenants aren't here, and all of a sudden, she's, she's got permission to use all their parking spots.
But if the landlord gives permission and the tenants don't, well, then what happens? The landlord owns the property. I mean, I don't know what the other board members think. I, I would have no problem-
Well, you're saying if you got, the landlord gives them permission.
If the landlord gives permission, if we get a letter from the landlord, I think that's a sufficient condition. I don't know that we'd need the landlord and the other tenants.
Yeah, but wouldn't the landlord have to, uh, wouldn't the landlord have to make his tenants happy? Wouldn't it, wouldn't it-
Well, that's something between the landlord and the landlord's tenants.
Again, uh, my condition is letters, um, from both. Uh, you know, if, if you want to change it, it's up to-
Well, I could withdraw my second, you could second, with those additional changes, and Mr. Thomas could, of course, agree to them.
That's what I was gonna say.
Okay.
Are you withdrawing your second?
So Mr. LaPerry is seconding the motion-
With?
With two conditions, approval of the landlord for use of the parking spaces, and approval of the other tenants for use of the parking spaces.
Right, I just don't wanna, uh, push the tenants or take over their spots without their knowledge or their approval.
My, uh-
I want them to all get along.
My sense on the other tenants is that the sign was out in front. Certainly, they couldn't have missed it, and they didn't express any opposition, so I would assume that the lack of opposition, uh, speaks volumes by itself, but I don't have a problem having them submit that.
And I think they would be appreciative of the thought.
Right, I, I think, right, I think if they were to approach them and say, hey, we're looking for approval with your blessing, and that would, that would make them all happy.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and no members are absent. Next, uh, item on the agenda is the application pertaining to twelve eighty North Winton Road. This is a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to, uh, this application?
Would this be considered, uh, this is a use variance, not an area variance, right?
This is a use variance, yes.
Use variance. Well, let me, I, I will, uh, make an attempt at this. I believe that we should approve, uh, this based on the, uh, criteria that the reasonable return on investment from the people that own it now, which is the Brotherhood of St. Joseph's, uh, is based on not being able to sell it, uh, or market it, uh, other than this particular gentleman. Um, they have been carrying the building for a while, and, uh, as opposed to when they had the, uh, had it rented out before, or were using it for, um, some type of house at one point. Uh, they are not getting a return on their investment now, it's sitting empty, uh, so selling it is the best way. They are selling it, it is a loss. Uh, it is a unique circumstance, number two, because of the type of building. It used to be a convent, uh, so it is a, a building that's not, uh, really a residence, per se, uh, except for a convent or a rectory. Um, it is a self-created problem, uh, because, uh, they did purchase it, you, figuring they could use it for a different reason, and that didn't work out for them, so now they have to find the, the way to get out. Um, it won't really change the character of the neighborhood, I don't believe, uh, because the, the, the character is that it is a complex. It used to be a school and a church complex, now it's divided all up into different, um, uh, uh, businesses, daycare, uh, school, uh, offices. I think it will fit in the character of that little complex, uh, as a, as a small group of offices.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question, actually. When a building is used for, uh, religious reasons, convent, whatever, it's tax exempt, right?
Mm-hmm.
Does this put that building back on the tax rolls?
I think that depends on who actually occupies it and who owns it, and, uh, other issues that somebody else in the town would have to decide, probably like the assessor.
So we really don't know that at this point? It could be, still be used for religious-
When the, when the title transfers, whomever takes title to the property, depending upon their tax configuration, that would determine whether it's back on the tax roll or not.
Okay. I didn't know if the findings and all these financial figures that we saw included a possible property tax in it.
Well, they, they wouldn't have paid tax, so they've lost thirty thousand just on the difference between the purchase price and the sale price, without any consideration of the transactional costs associated with each of those transactions. They haven't paid taxes, so if you added someone coming in for a residential purpose to who would then be paying taxes, it would make the financial situation even less, uh, advantageous.
True.
I was considering conditions on, um, no healthcare services provided in the building. I guess I'm, uh, uh, asking for the general response of the board of who would want that versus, uh, it, it is a suggestion on my part, it is not something I have to put in there, but, um, if there is any others that, uh, would, uh, the, the, the only question with the healthcare services, you'd have people come in and go in.
I think healthcare would involve some concerns from the health department, wouldn't it? Would they, wouldn't they have something to do with that?
They'd need a Department of Health permit, depending upon the healthcare use.
Yeah.
So that would, even, uh, a therapist, a, a psychologist, a, um-
Well, psychologists or a therapist, I'm not sure.
A dentist office, uh-
A dentist office, I think, would have to have something from the health department, I would think.
In all likelihood, yes.
But I don't think a psychologist would.
Okay, you know, I'm just putting the suggestion there.
Yeah.
Not necessary.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, any abstentions? Motion carries, six votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and we don't have any members of the board absent tonight.
I just have one comment, Mr. Chairman, if you could.
Sure.
I appreciate the sensitivity of the people that live in the area of this building. And when I opened up my packet at home and saw Brothers of St. Joseph, I go-
Not again.
Not again. You know, we've already been announced twice with them. However, this is a totally different, totally different picture, and probably, as far as I can see, uh, an excellent solution to that problem, because they will no longer own that building, and that, that's history. So I, I think you can rest assured that this is gonna be just fine.
Last item on our agenda is twenty-one ninety-four Hudson Avenue with respect to this matter. There has already been a negative declaration determination by, uh, the planning board, so seeker is not an issue that's before us tonight. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application? All right, I would make a motion, then, that we approve the request for the variances with the following, uh, findings of fact. The possible change to the neighborhood character, uh, is no more or, or less than would be expected, uh, by virtue of development of the property in a commercial manner, given the commercial, uh, nature of the uses in the immediate vicinity, and the fact that, uh, commercial development on the partial, parcel that's before us tonight, uh, is permitted, so that it will have this, whatever impact would come in a residential neighborhood that joins it, would come from any development. This is no greater or less than what would be required, uh, what would be expected, and given the lengths to which the developer has gone to, um, distance the building that's before us tonight from the, uh, residential neighborhood, uh, and the effort to keep open space, I believe that it minimizes, uh, any negative impact to the character of the neighborhood. Uh, the alternatives that would not require a variance would essentially have a, um, longer wall on Hudson Avenue, which would close up, uh, the open field that, uh, the layout, uh, as presented, uh, enables the developer to create, um, which gives less of a bowling alley commercial effect as you go down Hudson Avenue, looking at the overhead photo and looking across the street from where this is being developed. It's a huge, uh, parking area that fronts on buildings that are way behind. This gives both parking and building frontage. The landscaping that's been proposed is going to, uh, soften that, and I believe that the way that they've created the ingress and the egress, uh, will minimize, um, the, um, traffic concerns, and so the alternatives that are, wouldn't require a variance, I don't think would be as desirable as the proposal that they've made. I don't view the request as being substantial. It's approximately, I believe, twenty-two percent, uh, is what they're looking for when you consider the second building that is going to be there. Um, if granted the effects on the physical or environmental conditions, there's already been a, uh, negative declaration by the planning board with respect to the environmental impact, and, uh, that there's no, uh, greater impact, uh, that would be before us. Uh, the situation is somewhat self-created and somewhat not self-created by virtue of the fact that the, um, developer is attempting to soften the, um, location and the impact in the neighborhood by, by reorienting the building, so that, uh, a lot of the building is away from Hudson Avenue, creating a more open, uh, area. The developer is, um, taking into account whatever limited pedestrian tra- traffic there may be, and, um, but the situation also results from the fact that you had a parcel that is, uh, capable of being developed, that has been undeveloped for over fifty years, uh, and that also contributes to the situation. Is there a second?
Second, I'll second, and I would like to, uh, thank the applicant for not going over the entire presentation a second time today. Thank you.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to commend him. I, I, I do realize there's a certain group of people that are not, uh, excited about having this, uh, or the way it's going to be built, but I believe that it is a, a nice-looking, uh, building, a nice-looking development, uh, well-needed for that spot on Hudson Avenue, um, and, uh, well overdue, uh, and I look forward to, uh, shopping there.
I also think it's going to be terrific. Once it's, once it's up and completed, I think people will be very happy with it, the way it turns out. Any other?
Well, I just think it gives us another opportunity for jobs for, for our people. Uh, usually, the stores employ, uh, students and so forth, and I assume there'll be some part-time positions for, uh, students, and I just think it's great to have that added to our town.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, six votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, no members are absent, and that concludes our agenda for the evening.